Good afternoon and welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Select Board. It is Tuesday, November 21st at 4:00 PM. My name is Kevin Calcutt. I am joined by my fellow board members Chris Weider and Cece Van Time. We're also joined by our town administrator, Blythe Robinson, and our executive assistant, Judith Lozardi. As a reminder, this meeting is being audio and video recorded consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It will be rebroadcasted to NCTV's government cable channel as well as uploaded to NCTV's YouTube channel. With that, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, Blythe, will you mind taking us through our agenda this evening?
Sure. After public comment, we have a public hearing to consider and vote on the use classification of all properties for the fiscal year 2020. We have an approval, an action item to approve the annual Santa Parade on December 8th, approval of four warrants, and approval of two sets of minutes. So a short agenda.
Thank you. All right, so we will start with our public comment period. I don't believe that we have anybody here for today, but in the interest of consistency, we'll offer it to anybody who would like to come up and share with us this evening. Afternoon. Same thing.
On Thursday.
On Thursday. I said Tuesday before.
You did.
Oh.
But you might be in a different time zone.
There's some medication that might be involved in that.
Excuses, 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 excuses.
Well, I'm not seeing anybody for public comment this evening, so I guess we'll move on to the next item.
So, part of setting the tax rate and part of our budget process is to determine annually the use classification of all of these types of property in town. The town has historically had a single use classification across all types of properties, but what we're here to do today is hear a presentation by our assessor, Don Clark, which you'll see on your screen and is in your books, so that the board can make a decision about whether to continue having a single tax rate or have separate ones. After which, after that is done and the decision is made, the town's next step is to turn all of the information into the Department of Revenue so they can actually approve the setting of our tax rate. And we do have information about that calculation is in your books. And Todd Lindmark is here to answer any questions the board has about why the tax rate is proposed as it is at this point for the current fiscal year. So that I would turn it over to Don.
Okay. I'd like to say thank you first off for the Select Board to inviting me here today. My name is Don Clark. For the record, I am the chief assessor. This is my assistant assessor, Chris Minchell. Focus of today's hearing is to decide whether, as we've already said, to stay with a single tax rate or to go to the split tax rate, and whether or not to consider offering any exemptions.
Don, can you speak up a little?
Sure. Yeah, just over here. Sure, absolutely. Sorry. The town of Norfolk currently has 93.5% residential, 4.86% commercial industrial, and 2.9% personal Historically, any town over 90% residential will elect to stay with the single tax rate. Splitting the tax rate, of course, would put a heavier burden on the commercial property in town with minimal relief to the residential properties due to those percentages. Therefore, a shift in the, in that would put a bigger impact on the commercial properties and could possibly persuade or, oops, I'm sorry. Let me back up. Hit the wrong thing here. Sorry about that. Back up just a little bit. So therefore, like I was saying, a shift in that would put a bigger impact on the local businesses in town, which could influence some of them to leave town, which I'm sure none of us want to see. The assessed residential value is based on comparable sales market analysis. The assessed commercial value is based on income and expense as well as comparable sales analysis and cost analysis. The Department of Revenue annually approves these adjusted values as proposed as to the, by the assessing department. There are over 4,000 properties in town with hundreds of distinct components that make up the assessed values. In order to keep the data as fresh and accurate as possible, the assessor's office has reviewed 170 arms length sales this year. And we've also compiled and evaluated the income and expense information along with the forms of list for all the commercial properties. Massachusetts statute requires the assessors to assess all properties at full and fair cash value as of January 1st of each year. Full property reevaluation, also known as a certification, is completed every five years. Our next full reevaluation is, of course, this coming year, 2021. And we do do interim adjustments in between the four years in between, in between those five years. Currently, we are in an interim year. Your tax rate comes from these components: total taxable real estate and personal property, town meeting and appropriations, state aid, tax revenues, expenditures, new growth, and debit exclusion and overrides. What is new growth? New growth is assessed by tracking all the new construction, additions, and subdivisions throughout the town. This past year alone, there were over 250 permits requiring a visit from our office to determine whether or not they were, it was assessable growth, which is determined by the regulations of the Department of Revenue. This next slide is a glimpse back to our last full revale in 2016. Sometimes people like to look ahead to the future and base their analysis on the past to estimate what the tax rate or the amount of growth would be based on this. This process has a lot of variables. By using this $550,000 number for 2021, I feel it's a good place to start. I base this on the estimated amount of construction going forward. Strong values currently right now. Interest rates are still low, but the market seems to be slowing a little bit. There isn't as much construction going forward as there has been in past years, but we can still use this number to estimate spending for next year. In the end, spending would have to be adjusted accordingly after the growth was approved by the Department of Revenue. This screen represents the total tax levy that the town will be, the town will have to raise in property taxes. This number comes from the total budget minus the total estimated receipts. This slide is a breakdown of the different classes and valuations and percent of each class. As you can see, the residential is 93% of the total value of the town, making it nearly impossible to go to a split tax rate. The ideal situation would be 15% to 20% of commercial or industrial before considering a split tax rate. This is a breakdown of the impact of actually splitting the tax rate. There's a very small benefit to residential properties by splitting the tax rate because of the lack of commercial and industrial in town. This is an example of the actual dollar amount that would be represented with a split tax rate. I've given three examples: 1.05, 1.25, and 1.5, which is currently the largest allowed by the DOR with the current percentages that we have in town. As you can see here, it's a very small dollar amount saving to the residential, but quite an impact on the commercial and industrial. There's also three possible exemptions for the Select Board to consider. The first is open space. There's only one out of the 351 towns that have currently elected to go with this exemption. This is basically a shift up to 25% and can be adopted by a vote from the Select Board for all properties that are classified as open space. The town of Norfolk currently only has seven properties, which did not apply for Chapter 61 programs. They either didn't meet the acreage minimum or they elected not to do so. We currently have 36 properties accepted in our 61 program, which all receive a tax break on any of the land that has been put into this program. Therefore, this exemption was adopted only by a small number of properties that would benefit if this was adopted. I'm sorry. The second option, being small commercial exemption, is currently 15 out of 351 towns that have elected to do this exemption. The reason for the small percentage of the towns to elect this option is it's very difficult to track, as the benefit of this exemption goes to the property owner, not the tenant. Third exemption is a residential exemption. 16 out of 351 towns have elected this exemption. This is mainly for towns that have a large number of second homes, rental homes, vacation homes. The residential exemption can only apply to properties that the owner occupied, that the owner occupies and considered the primary residence. You must own and occupy the property and must file your taxes at this address. Therefore, that shifts the exempted tax burden to the residential properties that are not primary owned or occupied residence. This is more for vacation towns throughout Massachusetts, which Norfolk currently isn't. You can see here how the tax rate has adjusted over time. The tax rate is the town's tax levy divided by the town's total assessed value. Fluctuations in the tax rate are due to either values increasing or decreasing, or the town's budget increasing or decreasing. The Board of Assessors recommends that the Select Board, one, vote to adopt a single tax rate; two, vote not to adopt the open space discount; three, vote not to adopt the residential exemption; and four, vote not to adopt the small commercial exemption. Contrary to the school of thought, neither the Select Board or the Assessor's Office can raise or lower the tax rate. Spending is determined by the voting public through town meeting. It is the participation of the townspeople at town meeting that determines the level of services desired, directing, affecting the tax rate, directly affecting the tax rate. The actual levy divided by the total assessed value of the town multiplied by 1,000 is what determines the tax rate.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Questions?
Nope. Did the course. I remember it.
Don, are we fully, so all properties have been assessed now in town? Are all properties assessed up to date right now, residential properties? Are we behind or is? I know I just ran into a situation where I was redoing my insurance and they said, "Your house was built in 1900." And I said, "No, it wasn't." And they said, "Well, sorry, that's what the assessor's card said." So I had to go get them a copy of my deed showing when the house was built. And I just, how up to date are we on? I know, well, it seems like there's a lot of homes in Norfolk that are older that have strange dates on. And 1900 seems to be a date when I went perusing through. That seems to be a common date on a lot of homes in Norfolk, whether it's true or not. What's the vehicle for people? Obviously, we can go in the database and we can see it, but is there any other, are you guys checking that as you go forward or are we, are we looking at that?
We do review the town, you know, go out and inspect and things along that line, but as far as the data itself, if there's any errors at all, we welcome the public to bring that to us.
And just go to the assessor's office?
Yes, especially if the house is already in existence, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't be researching deeds or anything along those lines.
I can lend some history to that. When we first, I was the assessor in town when we first computerized. And, huh? I know, I got a big moment. Anyway, so if we didn't know the exact date of the construction, but we knew it was old, we'd use 1900. Because anything older than that is going to get, is not going to save in the depreciation that we give to the residents for the year of the house. So that's why we did it that way. We had to put something in there. So as people come forward and notify the office, "No, my house was actually built then," you should notify the assessor's office and they will update that.
Okay. Good.
Chris, were you older than 1900? Was that the issue?
No, it was actually newer than 1900, but because of the age, the insurance company wanted a higher premium.
Sure.
Because they felt it's age. So I said to send the bill to Debbie Robbins, Main Street, and she'll pay the difference between last year and this year and my new insurance. We had about, we had at the beginning of, I think, this, this board's infancy talked a little bit about seniors. And have you looked at, I think, I forget what town recently around us gives a exemption to seniors on property tax, on taxes? Is, have we explored what we could do for seniors at all as far as our tax situation or?
We do give senior exemptions. We have, we do give senior exemptions. We currently have a 41(c), which is, they're income-based. We have a 17d. These are state, that we have numerous residents. I mail them out every July 1, color-coded to help the process with them. They have to fill it out, sign it every year, bring me certain things, tax returns, paperwork. We have blind exemption. We have veterans exemptions. So we do already have those in place.
Do we have those on the website somewhere for people to see?
Yes. Yep, they're on the assessor's page. Anybody that has done it once with us, since I started, I run a spreadsheet so that I know who it is and they don't even have to think about coming next year that they have to remember to do it. I automatically mail it out to them.
Great.
It's a service, not every town does, we do.
Right. Good.
Sorry. I like to talk.
Did I give the wrong address for my taxpayer, my insurance?
No, that's, she's exactly right. The one thing that this town hasn't explored, and I don't know, you know, there's never been anything brought before town meeting, but the state does have local options. So for instance, right now, if you meet the income and asset requirements to qualify for the 41(c), which is the elderly exemption, you get $500 off your taxes.
We do 750.
Oh, you do 750. Okay, so they have explored it. But some communities have actually matched it so that they get 1,000, because the state has never updated the income and asset requirements, which in my opinion are ridiculous. A single person, 65 and older, their income has to be under 20,000 a year, and that's counting social security. So, you know, in today's day and age, I'm one of those. It, you just don't have it.
She's shaking her head.
And that's another thing that can be done, but it would have to be an article. Usually, the selectman would, you know, tell the assessors to explore it, but the selectman would bring it forward, the article, to maybe increase the income limits.
Can I interject just for a second? Can you hand the microphone back because she's shaking your head? I think you're giving false misinformation, not false.
It slightly increases every year. It's currently single, single person is 24, I believe it's 748. Couple is, it's still low, but it's determined by basically a HUD formula that they change every year. And the married couple is 37,000 and change. The assets are 20 and 40, single and married. Those are.
30 and 40.
Here it's 20, I believe it's 20 and 40. But those can be adjusted, but they have to be done at town meeting.
And would these be categorized as means-tested exemptions for senior citizens? Is that how this would fall under one umbrella?
Yeah, basically, yes. And those numbers, I don't know that the income, the 24, 7, 28 this year can be increased. The only thing I know that the town can do is they can vote to add COLA to it, cost of living, which is another small increase to it every year. It's not a huge amount, but it's, they're, you know, they're an asset and income-based exemption, so it's, it's not available just because you're a senior.
Right.
CPA, we can do, it's a much higher number. That is also, comes from the state, the numbers, and it's currently, I want to say, 76,000 or something for a single person, much higher. So a lot, a lot of people can apply for CPA and actually get that much less number off their taxes, but it's available.
Something.
Yeah. And it's, it's on the assessor's website and I always, anybody that asks, I always say, "Just call me and I will go," I explain it, however many times it takes till they understand what, what I need from them to get the exemption.
And John, you said we'd have to, Don, it would have to be around 15% to 20% commercial to even consider doing a, that's sort of the benchmark?
Yeah.
Really?
Absolutely. I mean, you can do it.
Do we even have enough commercially zoned property to get there?
No.
No, we don't.
No.
So it's never gonna happen. We're at 4%. So it's.
Maybe it'll happen in the future once V1 is all signed.
There's a slide in his presentation which shows if it saves a residential a certain price point, this amount, it costs us much more for the business. And I think that shows very clearly that it would just be such an imposition on the businesses that we have, and it doesn't save the average taxpayer, you know, as much as we would, they would hope it would. I think it ends up having an adverse effect.
And the other question, Don, was on new growth. Did, you know, in 2000, I can't find the chart here, but in 2020, we should see, I think, 340Bs start to really ramp up. I think 84 Cleveland Street started, but it should be more, 25 Rockwood Road.
Right.
And if 194, is that, is that sort of included in there? How do you, or did you sort of, you just used a 550 as a sort of a baseline?
Yeah, benchmark, really. It's, it's, I feel it's a safe benchmark, but there's so many other variables that come in other than the construction that I just, I don't want to reach and then have to retract the number that I put out there. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that number.
Okay.
Not to say that we can't do better than that. We may be, absolutely, depending on how construction goes, how many of them get finished. Those are the projects that we're watching. Come June 30th, if they're only 20% done or 30% done, that's all we can grab at that point, so.
I was gonna ask that. What percentage do you, it's a percentage of completeness that you can, so occupancy, is that how you?
When it goes to occupancy, that's 100%, but anything less than that, we can still grab it. It just depends on how construction is going along with them, approvals and how far along they get with the, with the project. So.
Cut updates, July 1st, new construction.
Yeah. So if we get a lot of good weather and they all get finished, we could get a lot of growth, but, so I don't like to, I don't want to reach out there too far and then have to retract.
It's a conversation we've been having internally because in December, one of the things we wanted to bring before the board is what we are looking to the future for FY '21 and what the town may be able to afford in terms of a budget increase, and a factor of that is how much new growth. And we don't want to overstate it because we don't want to pass a budget, then we then have to somehow reduce in the fall.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I think we're good. Anything else to add?
We did include, I don't know if you've seen it before, but the preliminary recapitulation sheet or recap sheet is, follows the presentation. This basically restates exactly what Don said goes into saying the tax rate, the revenues of the town, the expenditures of the town. And Todd is here in case you had any questions about any of that.
I'm done from my end.
The only thing I didn't see in there was, do we show, and maybe I'm missing it or just not included, is the rental we received from the MECS Center. Is that in here? And I couldn't, and I saw rentals, but is that the MECS Center, the rentals, is that the MECS Center, the 2020, 86,000?
It's, yes.
86,000?
86,000.
86,000 is the MECS Center?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You beat him to it, just so you know. She won. She got there first, Todd.
He had the microphone waited to go. He was waiting for process to kick in.
Yeah, but he didn't.
Much appreciated, so thank you.
In 2019, we showed zero for the MECS Center revenue for rental.
Well, because it didn't.
We budgeted zero because it wasn't in place?
Can't hear you.
We budgeted zero in 2019 because the leases weren't in place. So the leases came in mid-year, so we did capture that income as miscellaneous income. But now we're budgeting 86,000, going forward basis, as part of the budget revenues.
Okay. Okay.
No, I get it. I'm fine.
All right. All right, with that, I will move that the board vote to adopt a single tax fiscal year 2020 and further not to adopt an open space discount residential exemption or small commercial exemption. Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Don. Much appreciated. All right, our next item tonight is to please consider approval of the annual Santa Parade on December 8th, 2019.
So, I'm not sure what happened to my microphone, but.
Mine, mine seems to be over.
Mine's really loud.
Not too concerned about the people not being able to hear me in the room, but, so we have a Santa Parade every year, this year, December 8th. The police, fire, and public works are all on board to support that. And I think the, so we would recommend approval. The only thing that I know we're still tracking is the folks who are organizing just want to know whatever involvement you'd like to have so we can keep everybody informed. So we can take care of that afterwards.
Absolutely. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Very good. I would move that the board approve the use of town streets to hold the annual Santa Parade on Sunday, December 8th, 2019.
Seconded.
Hear a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Phew. We have some warrants to approve. It's like you're up first.
Me?
Go right ahead.
I moved that the board approve the following warrants. 1105, 2019, 19v20, $114,904.17. 1105, 2019, 19vSA20, $1,370. Not nearly as exciting. $1,370.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 On 1108, 2019, in the amount of $815,352.35. And 1112, 2019, in the amount of $231,331.29.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, our last is to please consider the approval of some meeting minutes.
Two sets of regular meeting minutes in October.
I moved that the board approve the minutes of the October 15th and October 28th, 2019, regular meetings.
Second. Further discussion?
Just a couple, sorry, a couple little things I noticed. On page three, in the third paragraph down, we have, he suggested getting vehicles fixed and noted that 390,000 miles. I don't want to think we're having a drug or something. So we probably should just correct that, so it's not... So getting the vehicles fixed, maybe?
Sure.
Do you need a "the"?
And then on...
I feel like you don't.
On page six of 12, last paragraph, it says, "Mr. Eater said they probably have not done a good job as a town about deciding how to celebrate the town's 150th anniversary." I think I said, "We have not," not "they." "They" being "we." Is "they," who would "they" be?
Sure.
It was "we."
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. So you were inclusively talking, okay, got it, got it, got it.
Correct. And then on page... I have time today. On page eight, it says, "Chief Stone." And the last sentence, it says, "When the vehicles are on shift, they will be kept inside." I'm assuming when they're on shift, they're actually on the road. So I assume it means when they're off shift, they will be inside.
We will check.
Yeah, we should probably check rather than just assume.
Just check. I just was concerned that on shift or off shift. That was the only string.
Okay, we'll check.
And I think that was it. So that is my discussion.
All right, so with the adjustments as noted, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Well, that's everything we have for tonight. Blythe, anything else?
Nope, we'll see you again on December 10.
All right, so quick opportunity. Just want to thank everybody that had a part in our Fall Town Meeting on Tuesday night. There was a lot of individuals who did a lot of work to get ready, to prepare, and to present something to the community. I want to thank everybody from the community who showed up, over 180 participants, I do believe,
That's pretty good.
which is fantastic for a Fall Town Meeting. And we look forward to seeing everybody come out in greater force in the spring. Anything else, Chris?
The only thing that one resident mentioned to me, and not a bad thought, is our police station signs. There is no lights on 1A at Sharon Ave. So at night, you cannot see where the sign to police is.
Okay.
And a resident had mentioned to me that, "Is there anything we can do about that?" I said, "It's a good point." Should be, even though most people use WAVE and GPS, there are a few people out there who don't know where to find their police station.
Thank you.
And I did drive down there the other night, and sure enough, after dusk, you wouldn't know where to go if you didn't know where Sharon Ave was.
Okay. I appreciate the input.
CC, anything to add?
No.
All right, with that, I would motion to adjourn. Shall I hear a second?
Seconded.
Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.